For which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, in second, any discussion? Alan Jason?
Aye.
I'll die. Question here is. Delegations.
We didn't have a sign sheet today, so we'll just kind of open it up for anybody who would like to. Okay. Also, if anybody would like to, like to speak more. Aye, aye. Go ahead, Lord.
I sent you an email yesterday, so that's me. I, I am very, I know we have some very anti-masters. I'm not for against masks, I'm to get rid of COVID. And right now, my kid is vaccinated, she wears her mask to school. The amount of students, I just had a text that are, there are four more second graders that have been diagnosed that are now out today. My request to you all was to stop school on Friday. If not, sooner. My daughter said to me this morning, last year we stopped school on Thursday when someone thought they had COVID, and now we have over forty-five cases of COVID and we're still in school. How does that make sense? And she was like, sorry. I just, for the community as a whole, for, um, this staff, I think that it's only fair to families, the students, the staff, to try and mitigate this as much as possible, because what we're doing is not working. I don't know if it was the concert that was the super spreader event or what, but whatever we're doing is not working. And the kids that are home on virtual, my daughter's friend is too sick to do virtual. She can't do virtual because she is that ill. And then her second grade sister can't do virtual because she's not born. So it's, it makes no sense, and I totally agree with the virtual option, except for next week. I don't think that it's fair to the teachers to have that requirement put on them. It's a lot of work for them. If you're worried about the time that they're going to miss from the work aspect of it, have it be professional info. I guess just, I just think that there's, it's not fair to the families to not have Christmas if kids are sick and they can't celebrate it. And I have no family here. We don't do anything. Like, I have no, nothing to win for this. I have absolutely no family here. We have our own little four people and our animals, and that's what we do for Christmas. So, mine to sense. And I'm speaking now, yeah, this is me.
So what would be the purpose in your mind of going virtual for a period of time? I've heard, I've heard two different sides. I've heard go virtual for everybody. I've heard virtual for anyone that wants to do virtual. So what would be the goal? What's the goal of the board's mind of going virtual? Going to stop the spread of COVID? That was a question.
I don't think our board can stop the spread of COVID. That's a, it's happening around the world. One little school district can't stop COVID.
Okay. So then what would be the purpose of going virtual?
So when you say going virtual, you mean giving people who don't.
Yeah, anyone that, right. Is anyone on the board thinking virtual education is the best for a student?
I don't think anyone's ever said that.
All right. I think we have a responsibility to provide what's best for the student. Right? And we already have a pathway. If a student gets diagnosed with COVID, they can be virtual. I think if someone in your household has COVID, right, they can also be on the virtual program. That's correct?
Yeah.
It says that.
Your experience is different?
I think the idea was allow people who don't feel that safe because it's a large number of other cases we've had over the last five days, to keep their kids home and still allow them the best opportunity to continue learning regardless of COVID for the next. There's a discussion around whether that's actually the best.
So everyone goes.
Is it best to do virtual or?
Yeah. So everyone goes and celebrates the holidays with their family, we come back, right, and there's double amount of cases that we had this week. We just keep doing this in perpetuity?
I think that's discussed.
Well, I'm asking the board, right?
That'll be something that we'll discuss when we get to the next agenda item.
Okay.
As, as, as the board discusses.
So what, what has changed with the COVID stats?
Sorry, I mean, I want to go back to you.
No, go ahead.
Because Lori, I do want to go back to you, so we'll finish you, but I want to come back to your comment.
No, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead and go ahead and address it.
It's not my personal experience.
Okay.
So it's Ava's friend, her, she has COVID. Her second grade sister has not been given access to COVID, or to virtual.
The, and again, I don't know the specific case for that. Anyone who, any student who has a immediate family member in the household who has proven a medical diagnosis, medical diagnosis of COVID, they then can request, they prove that medical diagnosis, and then they immediately have access to virtual learning twenty-four hours.
According to her, I believe that she has followed all the.
So then we, then she should follow up with the Stein, myself, to, to make sure that she has access. But that is, that is the protocol that, that we have been following. We have thirty-one students currently in that protocol. We have been holding the line with it having to be a medical test. Yeah, with a medical test. And that's some of the feedback that I've been receiving, like, can I just show you my at-home test? But we have been holding my, for that.
And she, she took her, your advice, or not necessarily advice, the followings, and she went and had a medical test done on Monday and provided it.
Yes. So we should follow up with that too. So I just got off the phone with a parent who said, hey, how can I show you this positive medical test? Said, take a picture with your phone, send it to us, and we will get the ball rolling. We love, we would ask for twenty-four hours to get you the medical test.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
So my question is, first, I tend to agree with Lori, shut it down. I'm sure we have snow days built in somewhere, whatever it is, but if we do or are going to offer the virtual option, open it up to a larger group, it's my understanding, and I know you sent out a secondary email kind of clarifying many of the staff that are out, but if we have a sub in a class, then we don't require a sub to take on a virtual aspect. So those kids are losing out anyways. So to Justin's point, are they getting the best education on virtual? Probably not, I agree. It's not the way I think it's the best way to move forward. And if we do have a large number of sample occasions, illnesses, whatever their reasons, and there's a sub, how many kids are losing out on that opportunity anyways?
Right now, we have, I have to take a look at it. I could count while we're, while we're discussing here about how many classroom teachers are out to be able to do that. Again, the purpose of virtual learning, when we go back to the purpose that was established in the fall, was a very short term to, to keep the, the child connected to the classroom teacher during a COVID situation. That still would remain true if, if, given my, and I'll be presenting a recommendation. That would be the reason to say, hey, we have a short term. It is still better than what we would say the asynchronous work, because we could have made that decision and that recommendation from our administrative team could have been in the fall to say, we're just going to go asynchronous. We'll send home homework packets or not for the four or five, or ten days and things like that. We feel that having access to the classroom, again, it's changed. It looks very differently than what it did last year from the K through two line. It's very small amount of time. Three through eight is, it's similar to what happened last time with the street men. Again, a little bit more independence, and also a little bit more freedom at home from the, from the family too as well. So the purpose was to keep them connected for that short amount of time when we are telling them not to come to school. That was the purpose of it.
So before by.
What's that?
It's by, these are some staff, all of the various.
Five, five.
Before we continue with audience comments and questions, we have a bunch of staff come in, and I know they have really short lunch breaks. So if any of the staff that came in would like to speak or have questions or whatever.
Hi. My name is Katie Glovig. I teach sixth and eighth grade social studies here at the Media School. Um, I am concerned about COVID and spreading COVID to my family from our schools here at school. My husband and I are both vaccinated, but we have a two-year-old daughter who's not able to be vaccinated yet. My mom has compromised immune system, and I'm currently twenty-eight weeks pregnant. So currently, despite my concerns for my family's health and safety, I've come to work every day this school year, except for one where I had a terrible stomach bug and I literally could not leave the bathroom at home. If families in our community are potentially going to be able to make the choice to stay away from the physical school building in order to protect the health and safety of their families, will staff be given the same choice? For example, am I able to teach virtually from home? Is the health and safety of staff families being considered in the board's decision? And if not, then why not? Thank you.
I'm out of those. Okay. Now you go.
I was just going to say, I think those are great questions, but to be honest, I personally do not consider it that way. I think we've been over the last two days. I've started, you know, more and more considering like what the implications are going to be and what the value might be for doing virtual for four days, or four and a half days. But, yeah, I personally consider the health implication from a staff perspective versus what family. Comparing what we're, you know, saying to staff compared to what we're saying to families from a health.
And I have, I recognize there's a lot of different stakeholders, and this affects everybody very differently. Students, staff, families. So, yeah. There's a lot of moving parts and it affects a lot of people differently, so please know whether, wherever you fall in those descriptors, these decisions aren't taken lightly with regards to anybody's health. And Dave, just FYI for you, if you want anything to say, say anything, if you're wondering what you're saying.
I think you should.
Okay, please, no.
Just in general, I think I made this point last year as well. What's incredibly exhausting is being on this merry-go-round of what are we doing, when? All the time we're switching back and forth. Are we taking COVID seriously? Are we not? Are we having mitigation? Are we not? Like, many of us feel like the decision was made in May, that like, you were going to be, the plan's in place. Anything that happened, like, this is it. Like, if people don't want to come, they choose to stay home. And now we're just adding another layer in of, well, now we have an outbreak. As, as many places will, and now we're going to offer virtual for a temporary period of time. It's just, it's overwhelming. It's overwhelming for students. It's overwhelming for us. And I just think it should be considered that we're kind of tired of going back and forth based on who is bringing their fit to the board at what time. When the people who don't want us to do anything are there, we're not doing anything. When the people who are upset that things are happening, we switch to that, and we're exhausted. And it's not a good way to function. So we're burnt out in general. Like many professions, like many parents, we're not saying that like, oh, we're special and we're out of soul, but it's exhausting that yet again, we, we've had things that could have been in place, we didn't have things in place, and now we're just reacting again to another thing that could have been done, handled differently from the beginning. I'm not making a lot of sense because I'm a little upset, but we're just tired of going back and forth all the time. So personally speaking, just for me, we shouldn't have offered virtual learning. Parents knew from August that we weren't going to be doing many things, like we had our outline things on the website, and that's what we should be doing. We shouldn't be saying, well, now we have a COVID outbreak, so we're going to start offering virtual temporarily. No, we knew that in the fall, this is what the plan was going to be, and that just is what it is. And if parents want to stay home, absolutely they should. Like, I totally agree. I personally would not be sending my child to school if they weren't vaccinated. I wouldn't be doing it. But I would not expect the school then to turn around again and say, here's forty of the virtual learning. So then in January, we can say, oh, back to school. Doesn't matter how many cases we have, it's forty, it's twenty, we're just back to whatever. We're tired of going back. So. And one.
So first off, thank you for coming, board. Thank you for having this special meeting to discuss this extremely important topic and timely topic. We're called here because we want to discuss this topic, we want to ponder it, and finally, we want to act on this. And it's all because of the recent increase in COVID cases within our buildings. And, you know, within my perspective, which I think was already touched on, but I missed the beginning because I was teaching students, and how I'd have minded watching my students so that I could come here, so that we could have this breakout. Anyways, in my perspective, we've got three stakeholders of three best interests. They are the students, number one, they're the parents, and they are the Merton Community Organization, which I include all of us that are under the Merton Community School District, all of you up there, and then all of us that are working here. Every single physician I consider a part of that Merton organization. Short background on me, just because I know a few of you don't know me, it's going to be really short because I know that I get long-winded on this speech. But I taught science for nineteen years, and I feel methodical, repeatable, and systematic approaches to dealing with problems are key to solving them fairly, rationally, and practically. The policy as it stands, the way that I understand it, is that if you have a positive COVID test, then we offer virtual learning for ten days. Is that a correct statement? Okay. Viruses do not care. All viruses want to do is replicate, replicate, replicate. That is their only goal. So they don't care what we decide. They want to live, and that is it. And we've known this since eighteen ninety-two. So this is not a new thing to us. This is something we've known. We have three options, in my opinion, and if you disagree, that's fine. We can go status quo with what the policy is. There are going to be certain parents that lose in that because they are concerned about their Christmas celebrations, their holiday celebrations, and they have this stress and anxiety, is my child coming home with this disease, whether I got them vaccinated or not? Are they going to come home with this? Students lose, because half the kids are here, half the kids are not. Maybe it's not half and half. In some of my classes it is, in others in my classes, you know, it's an eight, it's a fifth. But there are significant numbers of kids going. Teachers, we knew this going in, and AJ touched on it, that this was the policy. We know that in Christmas time and during the holidays, there are always students that are going to be absent. So if we go status quo, we follow the policy that we set in place, that is kind of where it is. To me, students and parents lose either way, because it's not an easy decision. We have this idea that we make over. I think that meets the needs of some parents, and I understand the deep desire to have that. Being a parent myself, like, I understand that want. The students, I think it's the same as status quo, where, you know, if the student gets the virtual experience, they're getting their learning. If the kids are here, they're getting their learn. It is the teachers that I think that are really getting, it's a large amount of work. It is a double dose of work. I've been working again for nineteen years. It is double playing. It is not the same thing to teach in front of a class as it is to teach in front of virtually or come up with materials virtually. It is a loss of our arts. This is not a job. This is an artistry in which you weave together backgrounds of kids' experiences in a way that they're going to learn. It breaks down our policy. If we set a policy, we should either hold to that policy and have the reasons and go with that policy. If we were to go a virtual option, do we get the option to be virtually remote so that those fears and concerns that our parents have, we can have those same fears and concerns to be heard, because in an equitable place that would make sense? Now, I think that there is a third option, and I know that you all know about what I think the third option is. But we could say, hey, we have a real issue here with this outbreak that is happening within our schools. We have already disrupted learning since last week because of this particular outbreak. Maybe we cut our losses and say, you know what, we're going to be fidelity to December seventeenth. And then we say, this gives us a two-week reprieve in which students, staff, families have the ability to have the weekend and Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday next week to get healthy, to stay away, to figure out how they can approach this so that they can still have the Christmas celebrations, the holiday celebrations that we all want and deserve. Students, let's be honest. If that happens, they're going to be like, it's a three-day snow day, but it's even better because it's plain, and they're going to be off the charts, like, thank you, thank you, thank you. I cannot tell you how much stress the students emote during the last two weeks, three weeks of December. If you've never been in a school building during December, it is a different cosmic energy. It is not normal. It is hyped up, amped up, and now that I'm in primary, it's a whole different ballgame. Santa's ready. Teachers, we, if you go that route, we understand the difficult pickle that you're in and the predicament, but then we feel that you value us, and not just the teachers, but every single staff member here, because I have talked to the students, I have talked to lunch ladies and other professionals, parent professionals. We want to feel that we are a part of that as well. And so in that option, it does say, hey, yeah, this is a situation we can't control because we know viruses don't care, but this is where we're kind of thinking so that we can try to meet as many needs as possible. So in the end, I really only see the two choices. Again, if we go status quo, it's understandable because we made a policy that we're going to have to stick with it and live with it because it was our collective board that made that decision, so we need to be there, if that's the choice we make. Or we could end early and recognize that this virus had it out for us and it got us. You know, for whatever reason it did, it happened. But this way, we don't have to go back and forth ping-ponging on policy, and we can be like, we're doing this because we care about our entire community, our parents, our staff, and most especially, our students. That's what I have to share. Thank you.
A couple of questions. I appreciate all your points. I've had a number of families reach out saying, we understand these three options are on the table. And public schools, them, is an education, is for a child to grow socially, educationally, but it also holds a historical component. They, it is going to, not all, but enough severely impact families next week who don't have planned childcare, who are both working. I'm not answering, asking you to answer or solve that problem, but that's just one other factor that we have to consider.
I would say I did miss that point in mind. That is, it does, I do understand the amount of stress that a parent does have to take on, especially in four, three, two, one, four K, five K. I do understand that situation. But I think coupled with everything else, I think it gives a clearer picture, I guess, of the virtual policy specifically, if that's what we're also talking about.
Real quick, I know I already spoke, and you guys are on a time crunch, but I one hundred percent agree and support with option three. I think it is fair for everybody. And to Katie's point about adding stress on us parents, I know not everyone is as flexible, things like that, but if your child were to end up with COVID or the flu, what's your plan? I mean, we're talking three days. What's your plan if your child comes home and has COVID or is exposed to COVID? By this late in the game, eighteen months later that COVID was introduced to us, everyone should have a plan.
Do, I do have one question. What's, what is the definition of a valid medical test? Is that a doctor's office? Can you go to Meyer or Auger's? Or administer by someone other than yourself? Correct. Yep. Pharmacy, lab, doctor's office, as long as it's not an at-home test. We don't require a PCR or anything else.
Great test is how?
Just a medical test from a medical facility, unlike your home.
So I, I understand where everyone's coming from, but we've been living this for eighteen months now, right? And if someone could tell me what works to stop the spread of COVID, let's do that. The reality is, there's nothing proven that stops the spread of COVID. Right? If anyone thinks that sending everyone home to celebrate the holidays with the family for a communicable disease like COVID is going to help stop the spread of COVID, I mean, come on, we're going to come back to school, right? More cases are going to come, and then we're going to have the same conversation over and over again. And I agree with what I've said back there. Whatever our plan is, let's stick to the plan. We can't be, what is it? How many cases we have? Seven percent of the student population, six percent?
At the primary school, at the primary school, we're over ten percent. District-wide, we're under.
And this is all, this is all based on fear, right? When you're afraid, you, you, you react in a certain way. So people are getting more tests now for their kids, right?
Is it based on fear or is it based on the reality of the facts?
My opinion is, my opinion is based on fear, because when a kid gets COVID, what's a doctor do for a kid with COVID? Absolutely nothing. Send them home and say, hey, just stay, stay there for ten days and then come back to school ten days. My mom works in a school district in Illinois that has more COVID protocols than any state around, right? She now has COVID. Okay? They're having a huge COVID outbreak, right? For those that understand math and follow charts, it's called a, it's called a, it's a lower high, right? The chart, you spike, you come back down, you have another big spike, and you come back down. That's how pandemics disappear. That's how it happens. That's just the phase ring, right? But to think that today, right, is the most cases we're going to have before the end of the school year, is naive to think that. Right? You never know when there's going to be a spike, and we're going to go back and forth constantly, and what are we going to do next? That people have to prepare and understand what the plan is. Me personally, right, the best thing for my kids is to be in the school and get education face-to-face with their teacher. Right? When a teacher has to split their time virtually with some students and some students in the classroom, those kids in the classroom also struggle to get the education from their teacher. And that's my, that's my biggest thing. Okay? Stay in Wisconsin, look at the facts, right? We know all the stats. And here's everything that's going to happen. As more COVID cases happen with the younger, younger age, right, you're going to see that the, the issues, the hospitalizations, all the stuff, it's going to get less and less and less and less and less, because that's how pandemics work, right? That's how viruses work. Right? So to me, the frustration I have more than anything is just, we had a plan, right, as a district, and all of a sudden, we have thirty-five, forty cases, or there's probably, it's probably going to spike even more because more people are going to get tested, and now we're, now we're panicking.
There are sixty-seven cases at primary.
Great. Let, so what if there's three hundred? So let's say there was three hundred cases. What if everyone had COVID, right?
So you're having people who are regardless of what's out, do you need to go out to the store or something?
Yes, that's my opinion. Right? My opinion about it is, this is a virus. No one likes getting sick, right? I was sick recently, non-COVID related, and it sucks, right? We were on vacation, I was feeling terrible. Went to the, went to the ER because of it, because I just felt, I just felt bad, right? It's terrible. No one likes seeing their kids get sick. I mean, strep throat and the flu, that's going around too, I guess was no one's talking about. Strep throat and flu, it's all COVID-based, right? But look at the stats, when a kid gets COVID, right, very rarely does something bad happen. Very rarely does something bad happen. You can start, there's already, there's already studies coming out about what has happened to our children, especially the young children, with them missing these early development years, right, these four K through second grade kids. What happened to them last year, it's terrible, right? The cognitive development of kids has been, been stunted because of what we've done to our education system. Right? So that's why I implore, right, just keep, stick to the plan. Stick to the plan, because if we think it's not going to spike again, right, there are some experts that say this could go on for another two or three years. Right? So every, every three months when there's a spike, we're going to sit down and have the same conversation, I think is ridiculous.
I think our plan's not working. I think the initial.
Again, show me, show me a plan that's worked somewhere in this country, and I will, I'll have a, I'll be glad to have that conversation.
We're also the highest school.
Today, right? But three months ago, other schools have. Right? And that's, that's, again, that's how viruses work. Things spread in communities, right? And then it slows down, and then it spreads again. That's just how, a pandemic is not a straight-line down.
There are two other communities in Montschuk Army that are experiencing.
And there were some in the spring that had two.
I, this is really two different issues. Is there, is there a problem now that needs to be addressed? And based on the high numbers, people's concerns, the stress on the teachers, I know that at least in one of the first grade classes, there were four students in there yesterday. The teacher's going to have to reteach all of that. So is there something that should be dealt with now for our current circumstances? And I think it's short-sighted to have a plan. And I understand we don't want to be reactionary, but as things change, your plan has to evolve. And I know, AJ, you don't, it's not a type of, you know, not drastic and reactionary, but, correct. Is there somewhere or something that's working? Maybe, but what we've done doesn't appear to be working. But that's second issue. That's long-term, should we make an adjustment to our plan? I think today, we're here to decide, is there an issue? Should it be addressed, and how do we address it? And I, I personally, from what I've heard from everyone, and I understand the hardships of trying to find childcare for three days. Yes, being off, you know, any school this Friday, not coming back next week, that two weeks to recover is a hardship to find childcare for those three days. But I think it will go a long way for all the fears that the teachers are having, that we'll have to do the extra work of, you know, planning for virtual and in-person, and then possibly having to reteach this all again in January when we're referring. So I, I think that if we don't think that there's an issue, then yeah, status quo, go with what our plan is. But I think with the numbers where they are, with the holidays, and then possibly in. But I think with the numbers where they are, with the holidays and then possibly infecting elderly relatives, I, you know, or the sense of the community, the teachers, the students, I think it's in everyone's best interest to seriously consider, you know, canceling classes next week.
Wasn't, I wasn't, this meeting for virtual, now you closing school now? That's what I thought the point of action was. Basically, it's good to establish your policy. I think you guys need to stick to your policies. You guys are accountable for your policies, stay accountable for your policy. Do what you need to do today as far as virtual, giving virtual options to people that need it. Most of your teachers, it's too much work for them to do virtual. You need, you need listening. And offer the virtual to the people that need virtual, but don't give it optional for everybody. To do, it's too much work. Stick your policy, stay accountable for the policy set up there, voted on, and stick. Have you, at 10%, have you already contacted, uh, March County?
Yeah, I've been in contact with March County twice now.
And what, I mean, what, what guidance have they given?
They have not, they have not given that. I, in order to say what should we do, what should we do this, I have not sucked that out. They've been in discussions, they've been, we've been confirming cases back and forth. Um, they said, Ron, obviously you can kind of possibly narrow what happened. And you let us know if you need any more help. So they, 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 they've always had recommendations from the county health department, whether we got mitigation and states like that. I've not talked in state Wisconsin.
So that's, at 10%, you don't feel we need that.
Yep. No, but I, that's fine. I, I, I contacted the county, county's fully aware. And from there, there'll be, uh.
Some of the superintendents feel 10%.
We wouldn't contact the state regardless of that. Right? We, the, the path would be we'd contact the county.
The county, correct.
I know some, some superintendents at other districts, other schools at 10%.
Yeah, we, we try to keep it a lot more local and make it some of those local decisions.
I'm a teacher and I have nine students in my class today and two positive COVID cases and I have two students for virtual. And in my opinion, it's easier to teach students virtual than to try and plan for students to be gone, maybe not teaching them. When I'm sending stuff home, I can't just send it home. They need to know what you're doing, what lesson we're on, um, what ages in the book we're doing. There's a test that they give you for, so I can't just pack it up and send it. If you're virtual, I can, I can pack it up and send it because then I can clearly say this is what you need to do. In the scheme of everything, I think that is all hard for everybody and I just want best, best for kids and families. Just my two cents, because I've got.
I mean, I, I am listening to everybody and I'm really thankful to be able to listen to teachers and hear what you're saying. Um, and I totally understand where you're coming from and where you're coming from. And I guess my question is, is like we all know, COVID's not going away. So if we shut down and, you know, so that everyone can be healthy for Christmas, to be around, and their families for Christmas, I understand the importance of that. But then what happens when, when the kids come back from vacation and they've been doing, you know, traveling from grandma's house to the aunt's house and, and they're still going all over, they're probably being worse. So what happens when they come back and then, you know, maybe it'll be fine for a couple of weeks and then a couple of weeks later, there's a big spike again, like, like you said, this is gonna be the funeral. So it, it, I think it's unfair to the teachers to, this is passing unknown, like. And, and the balance, but I, I think it's just something, I mean, I understand a lot of people, it's something, you know, to be concerned about, but we can't just like, are we just gonna stop? Like, is this gonna be the new normal now for years to come? Like, I'm trying to put in words what I, because I, I, I really agree with, like, it's, it's a tough call, it's a tough situation.
So policies, so the laws.
I just, I mean, there's been outbreaks before, you know, I mean, I can remember, and I've got a 33-year-old child and I can remember where there's only been a couple of students in the classroom because there's been an outbreak of intestinal flu or the flu and, you know. I, I don't know, I don't know what the solution is, but I just, I.
So last thing I have is, is, we all agree it's a tough situation, right? To me, my mind, a tight burger goes to the kids, what's best for the child and their education. And that would be to have as much classroom time as we can for that student. That's just my opinion. I mean, and honestly, if you think about it, our concern is what's gonna happen after Christmas break, right? Those people that are out right now, in 10 days, they'll be back. Right? So that, this is actually the, the best time possible because there's a break coming up built into the school. Let's not take everyone else out of school because of, I'm not saying that's what's on the table, but there's been a lot of chatter about that community, but let's just, let's just shut it down for a week. That doesn't help anything, right? It's not gonna change the current situation that we're, that we're in.
I don't hear any of us saying or hypothesizing about what's gonna happen after Christmas break. I think, try and totally get your point, we set a policy, stand by it, but I also remember it's having very clear conversations because there was such pushback. Why don't you have metrics? Aren't you have numbers? This isn't a plan, it's a plan without a plan. But it was intentional because we knew that it was gonna be fluid. And so it wasn't to be reactionary, but it also wasn't to be so rigid as to have to, like, if we take our two schools, the intermediate school population of an outbreak or lack thereof, looks very different than the primaries. Should those even be treated the same way? I recognize we're all in the same district, but if we weren't, one school was called something else and there was a dividing line, it's probably operating very differently. So our policy addresses the whole community, but do we need to take a step back now?
There's a number of crossover throughout the day from the two buildings, right? There's kids from the primary building that come up here for classes, there's teachers here that go down there. So there is some, it's not a huge amount, but there is some.
Speaking to the numbers, but you got actual numbers.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's what you're speaking to. Especially not your, we're disjointed. It's all on point. We're disjointed in the number of positive COVID cases, that's true, you know.
And so that's where I struggle when we're talking about a shutdown because we've got, um, percentage-wise, a very healthy intermediate building. And so we're telling all those healthy kids, you can't come to school. I would like to second something on that. But even primary, I know we're, we're already really focused on primary right now, right? There's classes that only have one case versus the other ones. So percentages of the classroom are different too, and maybe we should be looking at the percentages. Because if you're only teaching, some teachers are only teaching half of their class, some have a full class. So you're gonna take healthy kids and give them less of an education because we're not looking at it.
So that's an interesting question, when you say less of the education. There is, if we, if we make a decision today or whatever decision we make, it theoretically might go into effect tomorrow, right? Whether it's, you know, we're gonna do virtual or whether we're not, or whether, you know, we're gonna shut down or whatever. There really is big going to be effects. You know, next week, there's two and a half days of school. From what I recall, you know, there's not a whole lot of learning. I think Dave was kind of maybe alluding to this. The last couple of days before Christmas break, you know, they're not the most academically enriching days.
No, as teachers, we, as, as teachers, we give our best at all times, as we're supposed to do. But I know that most of the board, well, I can share my two cents, but that's coming from California when we got two sick Christmas all the time. That's a huge point. What we need to focus on is the quality of education and to the entire class. So we move on to a new lesson, let's say Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. If half the kids, like half of your staff, students are gone, you're still going to redo that teaching. So I think that that's kind of where you're going with that point. It's a messy thing, this education. This is not a product. This is a kid that is dynamic, that comes in with moves every single day, that is never the same. So one kid's great day is another kid's terrible day. I mean, we should not split hairs about considering every single day this grand glorious thing, or we should also not consider every day being this terrible waste of time. It is all a fluid thing that is extremely dynamic in nature. I guess I can't say it in the other day.
And I believe, please don't say that it's not, that we're not, you know, that it's especially with the kids. Lots of, we have regular academic lessons planned until four o'clock Wednesday afternoon. That is our expectation and what, that was our understanding. We don't have Christmas parties, we don't have that stuff. I have class until four o'clock Wednesday afternoon with things that the kids are gonna be required to have internet. They're not happy about it, you know? Honestly, would I like to have, I would like to have that too, you know? Like, well, let's have a fun, but we're not. So we are providing instruction, so, I mean, that did bother me a little bit when someone, we're not, we are, we are providing instructions.
And there's also testing that happens. And so what are we gonna do? We're gonna push that testing until after the break? Like, and then the kids that are learning right now, I guess, for all that time and it's fresh in their mind, is the time to test them? Is the reason why we have a test that we board and don't take a break? So what happens then? Are everybody gonna push them off? Like, there's so many things that, I, it needs to be backed in that.
What are the impacts of the staff that are currently out, especially at the primary? I think there's probably more than a few. You know, those kids have, you know, we are struggling to, you know, obviously, we don't have subs to fill all of the classes or we're, we're having other people, you know, other district employees fill classrooms, uh, some of which are historically the teachers, some of which, we don't have as much, you know, teaching experience. So from that standpoint, when we're talking about, you know, the quality of education over the next, you know, four or five days, you know, if classrooms are being filled with, you know, staff, or is classrooms are being filled with not a regular classroom teacher? Like, there's already a disruption to that educational experience. And depending on who's in that classroom, it may, it may get 90% of what we normally would, it may get 30% of what you normally would. Right? We, we, we're moving our.
We're getting something, we're getting anywhere between those ranges.
Whatever the numbers are, right? It's, it's, it's a lesser experience.
At the intermediate school, Jay, I think we're, I think every classroom teacher is here today. Except for one of the seven that AJ and I are covering. Okay, definitely. So yeah, so we are 100% staff here from the classroom teacher standpoint. Becca mentioned five. We are.
At the core.
At the cores, core level. And, and our staff is really picking up the kudos to our special education team, our IAs. We have our part-time staff coming in full-time. Um, and we've got, and we actually displaced very few people remarkably this week because some of our people who we would displace may not be in school. So. But we're moving forward. We, we are staffing buildings and looking forward. We, we will be able to, at this point, um, continue staffing our buildings to make sure that kids can come through the doors.
Well, sure. Obviously, we're gonna make sure there's a grown-up in front of the classroom. But my, my argument is, depending on what happens, like, the quality of education that that classroom gets, it's not gonna be as rigorous as it would if the classroom.
It didn't.
Okay, but.
Just from a, even if I did, both sides, like.
I, I didn't, right, and I didn't, and Phil, I can show you like an example I have in front of me about who is all filling in for who because we do have a lot of substitute teachers here today for our, for our classroom teachers. Actually, I think all of them are substitute teachers throughout the, I think all of them are.
But that's a whole different issue you're talking about. But yeah, I personally think we have great subs and we have great teachers that have great sub plans. Um, but you're now saying like, what happens like when it's not ready for Christmas? That's a sub thing, not a COVID.
And that's really why, you know, when we say, it was mentioned before about the substitute teacher not running that virtual, that's just, it's, it's a difficult job enough. Let's just continue to really focus on that and, and then the other question, the quality of education over the next five days.
That's not what I'm worried about. I'm not worried, but I mean, I'm worried about if we go virtual, what are we doing to the students? Hey, first of all, what are we doing to the teachers? When I first heard that as an option, the first thing came to mind with teachers. Because it's busy for all of us. I'm a same-home mom and I'm tired. I can't imagine trying to run a classroom with all these kids and, dude, now let's give them a second job. And the other part I'm worried about is that we all know what virtual takes away. That's why we don't have virtual as an option. And we said we are core school, this is what we do, this is how we do it the best. And then on top of that, when teachers come in and now they have to take away and they're, there's no way a teacher can give 100% like they usually do if they're going to teach somebody else on their computer. That's just so much for them.
I disagree. Sorry. We do give 100%, that's the problem. Is that it's, and it takes more than we're already, because we do give 100%. And that drains us more than we already are, so.
So. That's your current level? I'm sorry, let me rephrase that because that's definitely be taken wrong with. At your current level of you giving 100% to your team class, you're now gonna have to give 200% to get there. That's what I meant. I didn't mean that you're not, I, I know you guys have the heart for this. I've seen it, like, I've seen it with my kids, I've seen it with other kids. You guys really are good for the kids. And I just, for me, for the teacher-wise, like, that is a stress on them. And then I also feel that it is a problem for our kids-wise, but. Sorry, because I, yeah, um, I just wanted to also mention, we're talking a lot of like physical health and that's really important, but I also want to talk, touch on mental health. We're tired. Sorry, oh my God, don't, don't do it. We're tired, we're very, very tired. And we, and a lot of us have kids at home or whatever, and.
Or older parents.
Or, and, right, like, we're very burnt out and very tired. And we, and this is, and this is my first year here, but we have some of the best staff and some of the most caring people that were with, that, that were here, and I truly, truly believe that. So I quote to, to, so to AJ's point, we are putting in more than 100% anyways. So we're just really, really tired and mentally, and even for us, but also for our kids, for our staff, like, we're just, we, this has been, our world is just crazy right now. And everything around us and when I'm in Waukesha and everything else, like, kids are really struggling mentally. Staff is also really struggling mentally and we just are tired and we.
I think, I would just like to say that I think there is some value in, I'm sorry, I forgot. Um, whoever mentioned that perhaps we could think about the school separately, even though we are a district. I mean, I can speak from a sixth through eighth grade perspective that the things that your teaching staff puts together and provides for students every single day digitally through Google Classroom is outstanding. So if you stick to your policy of only COVID-caused students qualified for virtual learning, is there going to be a disadvantage slightly? And if a, if a family decides to keep their student home for precautionary measures, is there gonna be a disadvantage slightly? But are they out of, of education? Are they missing out on everything that's happening in their classes? No, because your staff is providing all of that information for them every single day through Google Classroom, responding to emails, talking to kids, using the technology that we have available here. I know that's not the case of the primary school. Their littler kids, they, they can't do as much independently, they need more of that guidance, I've done that. So I just think maybe that is something that are the people who don't deal with two buildings in exactly the same way.
And really, you want to clarify? I think you give 100%, I'm saying the 200%. We have phenomenal.
I was about to step out, so the last thing I'll add is, I just would like you to consider what the goal is. If the goal is to prevent more kids from getting COVID, absolutely, steps should be taken. But I don't feel that's ever been our goal as a district, whether I agree or not, it's a whole different story. That's never been our goal. So parents can make the choices that are right for them. We need to hold true to what we have decided, whether we agree or not, this is what we've put in place. And if parents want to hold their kids, they can. That was the whole premise of our whole thing with parent choice. So let them choose to either not receive education for five days or to promise them. That's my feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did receive, uh, just very briefly, three emails from parents who couldn't be here and they requested that I just kind of read to the board in summary. Um, this is from Stephanie Wagner, a parent in our school district. My name is Stephanie Wagner, I am a parent of three children who attend intermediate and primary schools. I unfortunately could not join, they do, three of my family members testing positive for COVID-19. Thank you for holding the meeting and reading my letter. I have one question for the board, but we'll come back to that question after I make my, make it clear why I'm asking. Back to the end of twenty twenty school year, we have the unfortunate issue of the global pandemic upon us. Also, our new board was established and ready to fulfill their duties to represent and advocate for the local district. And making our children have a good education and is safe in their environment. With ten days remaining in the school year, a meeting was called to discuss mask requirements for our children. The vote was to no longer require masks despite local and federal research information and article stating that masks help prevent the spread of disease and viruses. I did not understand why we would, in ten days, be such a concern. The following school year, twenty twenty-one, masks are not required. Distancing has gone away and for most of our community, we are back to pre-pandemic life. Knowing COVID can spread quickly in large groups such as schools and school activities. Most of our children could be protected at the time with the vaccine. We sent our children to school unprotected, hoping for the best. We have the choice to wear a mask. However, they work best if everyone is participating. You wear a mask to protect others as much as yourself. We have the choice to quarantine our child and we believe that they have been in contact with someone inside or outside of school with COVID. However, we cannot participate in virtual learning without presenting a positive COVID test. This environment makes it difficult to keep our children safe and their peers safe, I'm in an unsafe environment. I feel these school protocols are irresponsible. As school-born members, you are to fulfill the duty to represent and advocate for the local school district. This includes making sure our children have a good education and are safe in their environment. My question is to the board, what are you doing to create and or maintain a good education for our children to keep them safe? I understand this pain is about virtual learning. I hope today you make decisions to promote accessible education in a safe environment for all children. Yes, Stephanie Wagner. Um, I have another letter from Jessica and Mike Clark. Requesting that I share this with the, with the group today. Our oldest two children are in first and second grade at Merton Primary. Currently, in our son's first grade class, forty-one percent of the students have tested positive for COVID. Due to our son's direct contact with a positive case, we have kept our children warm. Fortunately, all of our children have tested negative for COVID, but continue to monitor them closely as to not put others at risk. With the positive cases growing throughout the school, we are not comfortable sending our children in person at this time. Not only want to keep them healthy, but we are also doing everything we can to keep the immune-compromised little sister safe as well. That said, it's awfully close to the holiday season and risk proposed this, and, and the risk posed this close to the break. Just doesn't seem worth taking. We prefer to remain cautious and enjoy our holiday without concern while also fulfilling their school obligations. We know it's not an easy ask for teachers and others involved to offer virtual option. And we certainly appreciate the already implemented additional efforts. Hopefully, this is just a blip on the radar and we can resume normal activities after the new year. In the end, we are hopeful that both of our children have the same virtual experience as their peers. In turn, help to stop the spread of COVID throughout the school. Jessica and Mike Clark. Um, finally, I have a, a member of our community, which is to remain anonymous due to, uh, the medical needs of, of the family. Um, lastly, I am the mother of a child who attends Merton Primary and currently asking through a major. I am currently going through a major health issue which causes me to be immune compromised. I am writing today to ask the board to consider changing the virtual learning policy. I feel that there is much more than one COVID case. I, I feel that when there is much, there is more than one COVID case within the classroom. Each family should be able to choose if they would like to be virtual for ten days or not. We should not have to wait until our children are sick or someone in the household is before allowing virtual learning. For some families, waiting until that point could cause serious health risks. Thank you for your consideration.
It was comments, emails, texts, conversations like that, that made me look at the schools very. And I think Marty was saying that. Especially at the lower levels, if she can, you know, your child virtually, yes, she recognizes, sounds pretty impressive. But it's still more than asynchronous learning, just sending packets home, I'm saying that's, especially.
Do you want to go there one more?
I just thought the policy was that they couldn't send packets home, packets home with work. If you kept your child home out of the abundance of proposals.
No, we, we have.
I thought that's what the policy said though.
No, we would, we would accommodate families as much as we can. We've always, when cases of this situation have come up before. Say, for instance, if they, it's, it's been a remote family member who they've come into your eye contact to and didn't want to send back. We've always tried to work with the family as best as possible.
Could I get some clarification? Because I, I know that there's some confusion in the community on, on this part. Um, so if a child is COVID positive in the home. And obviously, they're staying home because of that. And they're able to do the virtual and they have siblings that are showing no symptoms, they're testing negative. But the parents choose to keep them home because they live in the same household. Do those, can they also do virtual?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, they can.
And some people were under the assumption that. You had to be positive to, but it's, it's the household.
It's the household, that is, yes, we are really trying to make sure that.
Or if a parent is positive.
Yep.
Their children can get virtual, they have that choice.
They just have to, they have to show us that, uh, medical positive COVID test and then they will have access to virtual or.
That very well.
Yep.
And then I guess what I just wanted to add before that I forgot to is, you know, we talked about, you know, the physical, keeping the kids physically healthy and all of that. And I, my concern is, is, you know, we are, we're always looking at the COVID, the kids that are out with COVID. And we have to remember the healthy kids too, because of the mental health issues. And I just know that there was a lot of issues keeping healthy kids home and I'm just. My concern is going back to all of that where all the kids are at home again. And I think it's just a slippery slope and I'm afraid if we start, you know. Doing all, everyone, everyone go home now, and we'll do this for two weeks. You know, we'd be running to either coming back and then flip-flopping back and forth for the remainder of the year. Or I'm afraid we, we, we go to, well, we're home now, you might as well just keep them all home and just continue the year like this. And then that's, I think it's gonna be really hard on these kids when they've gone through.
I don't think anyone is proposing or advocating that we spend the rest of the year doing virtual education.
I, I understand that no one's doing it now, but.
Once you open that door.
Once you open that door.
Well, we opened that door last year and tried it and it, for some people sucked really hard. And so we advocated, or I personally advocated, we're not having it at all. Uh, this year, right, and then we backed down from that and had it for people who were out with COVID, which is not.
I mean, you should really listen to your teachers that were speaking today.
I don't disagree with them.
I mean, they, I think they were, they're holding you guys accountable, they want you to either stick with it or set it in place. I think that's what they want.
I don't disagree at all, but the best, the majority except for one teacher that we heard were all intermediate. And then the one primary staff that we heard from said virtual is really helpful for.
But here's the thing, that one person too, one of my favorite people too, sweetest one. Um, but her classes getting hit really hard. I, we're looking at primary as a whole and there's other classes aren't, that aren't that, too. So that needs to be reflected in.
Well, I mean, she has two different classes that are.
Right, the class only you're actually.
We have that information. So you have that information.
Yeah. Maybe fourth grade, yeah. So I guess, I'm, so I'm already a half hour late for a different meeting. Uh, so I, I guess so for, I think we can probably move to, uh, discussion with the board. That would be our asset. You want, I mean, you want to introduce your.
Do you want me to, do you talk, do you want me to do that? Katie, do you kind of recommend? Okay, so, um, I've obviously been communicating with, with many and all of our stakeholders. Talking to kids, talking to staff, talking to parents, talking to community members and, and things like that. Um, and it's with great reflection and, uh, and thought that I come back, come up with this recommendation and that I'd like to present it to the, uh, school board. And my recommendation does include a primary recommendation and a intermediate recommendation. Um, my recommendation is for, given the rise in cases, right now we are over ten percent. Uh, again, I do believe that the plan, policies are meant to, uh, continue to be planned and worked through when situations come up, we deal with them. Um, my recommendation is to open up virtual learning options for all students and families who would desire. Through the remaining December days of twenty twenty-one. Given the rising numbers, I mean, we've had fourteen as of today, before our meeting, even today. Pushing our numbers into the mid-fifties. Um, that families can choose to keep their child home, will be excused absent, and access a virtual learning option. Or utilize learning work activities through asynchronous work. So families would have three choices, come to school, jump into our virtual learning option, or just choose the asynchronous work. Okay, so they would have three options there to met, best meet their family's needs. Um, I feel this is also a mitigation step that we can implement for families to not feel the pressure to send their child to school. Stay and continue their education. Um, please note though, virtual learning option, particularly for K through two, has changed significantly. Uh, based on what it was a year ago because of the age of the pupil. Third and fourth grade, you will see much more live teaching, mathematics lessons and things like that. I have supplied the less, uh, the virtual learning plans and schedules in, uh, to the board. These are all available online on our website, uh, which I did push out to our families yesterday. So, um, again, this would be just for the remaining part of this December. Which I, my recommendation would be, if this is an option, to begin this on Friday. Um, and that would be the soonest we can begin to give families the opportunity to think about it. Fill out our form and then our staff could then gather information and then push that out to families in the area of activities. And things that they can pick up at the primary school office. Okay, so Friday would be my recommendation for the earliest to begin then. Merton Intermediate, my recommendation is to keep the virtual learning access the same. Given the number of cases and what we are seeing at Merton Intermediate School. Um, right now, the numbers, we have five COVID positive students in Merton Intermediate School. Um, we really feel that, uh, again, the, the burden that we've heard from our staff. Um, to, to continue to open that up for those who, uh, again, out of the abundance of caution. I understand that, that they may want to stay home. If they do want to stay home, we will gladly, like Katie said, they have access to Google Classrooms, asynchronous work at that time. So they still have the two options, one would be the, uh, the, the in, in school or asynchronous work. Which is tied to Google Classroom and Skyward and things. Uh, I really support families' choice during this time, uh, very, like it was mentioned before. To, uh, as something that as a district, we have really prided ourselves on. And I understand that even with our spite, um, I do believe that it still is a parent's choice. And they are well-informed, uh, to be able to make that decision whether to send their child to school, whether that be Merton Intermediate or Merton Primary. So, um, yesterday, uh, we had approximately two hundred kids out between both buildings, we did. We can flip that and say we also had six hundred fifty students attend school live. And, uh, I do want to honor, uh, the families who wish to still continue to send their students there. Whether it be for educational, personal, or other reasons. So, um, and I do believe that continuing this virtual option, not shutting down school, is the right for our community. And I understand that, that comes with a lot of reflection and conversation with our staff because I do believe. Staff can, can continue to push that two hundred percent.
I guess, for what it's worth, we have not been much. Yeah, when, when Katie, when you first brought this up, when I go over, what's? My first response was like, oh yeah, that's a great year, a great idea, first we should all be able to do this. And then after thinking about it more, I, I started thinking about, you know, what the impact is on staff and what the experience is actually gonna be. And obviously, of course, classroom, and mostly at the primary level at least. You know, for classrooms that the teacher is out already, the subs don't have to be virtual, which that makes sense. Um, you know, four, four days or I guess if we start on Friday for, wait, four days, right? Uh, for four days, I don't know that it makes, makes sense to make that change. Um. You know, I, one of the reasons I really liked it was, it was at least an acknowledgement and, and recognition to the families that had significant concerns. Um, that, you know, we were listening to their concerns and, and willing to, you know, work with them and do what, you know, was best for their students. Um, but, yeah, I don't know that, you know, practically speaking, that, uh, experience is gonna be that great. I know our teachers do the best they can, but with the number of teachers, especially they got a timer that are not in the classroom. Um, I think it's gonna be a real struggle for kids, so the kids that are home try and choose the virtual option. My concern is what the experience is gonna be for them because of all the other stuff going on, not just the normal like virtual experience. Um, especially if, you know, if it's just for the, you know, four days. If it's a general change in policy for the rest of the year, you know, that's a different conversation, but that's, that's not. Um. I guess, my opinion would be that we should. Let families choose to stay home and do asynchronous work. If that's what they want to do for the rest of this year to get through this, you know, rising cases. Um. Honestly, I am intrigued by the idea of being done on Friday. And I understand that it's, you know, that's an extra burden on some families. Um, but I think that our staff morale has been, continues to be hit really hard. Um, and that's obviously something that we've struggled with for years now, we've been there for COVID. Um, and I mean, just looking at the faces of the, the staff members that came into rooms today, like. They weren't the right, your normal selves, right, they're, they're exhausted, that's apparent. And they're still, you know, they're doing their best, I acknowledge that, but I think offering up that extra brain. Would mean a lot to the staff members, so I, I would be supportive of that idea. Um, and I know that Ron's recommendation is, okay, but from a, from a, from a creation perspective, I don't actually even know that the board can make that decision. I think the board might recommend to Ron and, and he would, as a superintendent of the district, would all make that call.
Um, I guess, Phil, this, and I do want to say, and again, I, I feel we are trying to support our staff through this as much as possible. Um, we have professional development planned for this morning, we just said, you know, our, our staff meetings, just team time, just, just. Just get yourself organized through what you have to do. Um, we've been still supporting our staff who have put in for personal days. We've been supporting our staff who have to take care of personal business, whether it be through appointments. Whether it be through, uh, their own children or their own direct contact, we're supporting them as much as we possibly can. So, and, and those are kind of behind-the-scenes stuff that we're doing and trying to, the spirits and things, and we've got a food meal lunch tomorrow, so I think. But, uh, there's a lot of things that we're trying to really do and support staff through this time. Um, and this time of year, people are tired. People are tired, this is another layer on there, but we're really still trying to support them as people and honor what they asked for in, in the past. To really try to support what they can do personally. But yes, recognize that they, they're tired.
Yeah, I just. And this, our teachers give a hundred percent every day that are here. And even on the events, to be honest, like the teachers. But a hundred percent is a different thing if you're, you know, well-rested and energized versus whether you're exhausted. And stressed out, right, that just, it's a different thing.
And the other, the other piece that comes with my recommendations in the primary school. Is, uh, we know that four K through second grade is, is, there, there are small pieces in our, just looking at for second grade. I think the, uh, the, the virtual part is almost maybe, maybe an hour of their day. And then the rest of it is, is asynchronous work. For third through fourth grade, six of our eight staff members, and again, that's more live. Um, six of our eight staff members currently at virtual learning occurring or will be occurring tomorrow based on our COVID protocol. So, um, in talking. So, um, in talking to one, a couple of the teachers, kind of very similar to what Martika, if I've got one, two or three. You know, so we're seventy-five percent of our staff already have virtual learners in there, and.
Of those two grades.
Of those two grades, and now those ones that.
Will this staff member hurt, oh, still, or? What I know? So that time, there's one of those, one of those big classes wouldn't be virtual regardless of what, since when until Monday. Until Monday.
Right, and they, they, they've not had it this week. But there wouldn't be, for that one classroom, there wouldn't be accessible with that.
Because you can, um. And share, um. Very sort of, just knowing that this was on the table. Because I, I appreciate, and I don't need to put any aside, but I did appreciate the different perspective that Martika gave versus, um, the intermediate teachers. It's a different experience, and I think we need to respect that.
Talking to staff who's similarly, um, general, but there's a lot of virtuals because of numbers, they, it's all across the board. I think that in my mind, there's two things that I was questioning here. We're talking about access to education, right? And knowing that we want to give work at kids, what is the best access to education? That's face to face, but when that can't be done, what's the next best access to education? Would definitely be have some time with your teacher within the day. So I think that all kids deserve access to education, absolutely. And then where we are right now, just talking about the virtual learning aspect, not about the other conversation about, you know, supporting a grade that's a little early and stuff like that. That's one of the things that we're trying to be decided, you know, in thinking about what harm is done to open up access to education. So that's kind of where I sit on it, and what I hear when I'm talking to teachers, similarly to Ron, I looked at all the numbers, I talked to teachers, um. A lot of teachers have virtual, and it's another student joining into that, um, I think that's important, you know. The other piece though that I wanted to mention is, I mean, consists of further conversation, is what is being done to mitigate? Because virtual learning does not mitigate the situation. So that's what I think that needs to be also discussed in the future, or currently, what is the mitigation? I believe parents moved since they felt like they didn't have mitigation options, they took students out to the classroom because they in their own self are trying to mitigate. And that is what they're doing, so that might be a way to kind of consider why that choice of taking out an abundance of caution, really their planning, trying to control some mitigation standards. At the bare minimum, that I would recommend to the board to consider, is that when there is a positive, positive COVID case in a family. That direct contact family members do not come to school. Right now, it is open, I have a family member, let's just say, Mount High Stein has COVID, I can still come to school. That also creates a spread, and so that's what I think has to be talked about in terms of mitigation. That's the other thing I'm hearing from staff, is around the mitigation and just that one piece of adding that to our policy to think of mitigation when there is a true known. Case in a household, and so those, if you want to hear, like, those are some of the things that are being discussed. Um, if you had asked about going virtual earlier in the week, or earlier last week, whatever, I, I understand, sure, it's only, it's a couple days. That's, that's also part of this. Um, the idea that today is the fifteenth, we have ten days before Christmas, those celebrate and participate in that, giving families the best access to be able to go with their families is also very important. So I think those are all things that are playing into this, knowing that for families, our board, for many more, our staff, none of these are easy decisions. And it's not going to work for everyone, it really isn't, so I, I think that that's just some of the stuff that I've heard and been part of, and I hope, I. I'm trying to solve the two, I don't have a perfect plan. It is, but those are just some of the things that I would just say from all I know.
I will. Uh, can I just, sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, couple, it's just two points of clarification this time, um, access to education. I think it's worth noting. Uh, parents are making the decision themselves to take their kids out of school. And it could be because they, they personally, their personal opinion is that, um, they, they think it's unsafe. That's an opinion, um, and maybe they're doing it because of the holidays and, and, and saying, okay, we're in this kind of ten day window and. If we can all stay safe in this ten day window, you know, we'll be able to spend time around the holidays with, with family. Um, two, yes, our policy does state that, uh, you can come to school, uh, whether you're a student or staff, if you're. If you're not experiencing symptoms, and I, uh, I think you said that, 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 uh, creates a spreading event. I guess I would, uh, respectfully say it could or could not. And that's a fine detail. As, as for safety, I just, I feel it's important just to restate a few things about COVID. Because I, I do think it's important in the context, and I think it's an opinion, and everybody is free to have their own opinion, not discounting it. I just would like to share my opinion as I learned, uh, in prior board meetings, it's important to share that. The American Academy of Pediatrics continues to state weekly on their website that COVID-associated hospitalization and death is uncommon in children. And then they go on to say severe illness due to COVID is uncommon among children, and so we don't have a care of a pediatrician. I review it and print it off every month, or every week, because they update it weekly along with each month, fifty page report. Hospitalizations from Wisconsin, hospitalizations from COVID for children has actually decreased as a percent of total cases from early August when I personally began to track it. From one point one two percent to one point four five percent. Uh, or said it another way, ninety-eight point, uh, nine five percent of children who have gotten COVID in Wisconsin are not ending up in a hospital. Okay, the same goes for folks that are ending up at the ICU, kids that are in everyone else. That has dropped from point zero four percent to point zero three percent. Again, ninety-nine point nine seven percent of children who have got COVID in St. Louis, Wisconsin, which is a hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred, it's changed as of this morning, do not end up in the ICU. Vaccines are now all available for children if parents want to vaccinate their kids. Four K and number, it's not available, although masks are available. We're distancing in classes in work, and we've increased additional cleaning, uh, in, in the school. I, again, it's my opinion as, as a parent, uh, that, that is safe. Uh, and I get everybody's got, everybody approaches this differently, um, but I, I do think that, uh, as a district. Um, uh, this is a safe, my personal opinion, and I, and I get that might differ with other people, and. I'm okay with that, and I'm okay with their opinion, I'm not, uh, talking down to them, I'm just sharing my opinion.
So this, one point of clarification, vaccines for the, who was called the primary H six, are available. Uh, I think. So vaccines don't, obviously, as soon as you get the shot, you're not vaccinated, right? There's time to know about that, it would be. Um. Mike has got his first dose the weekend after they first became available, which again, was four or five days, when they became available on our page. And he's not officially vaccinated based on the timing until this weekend. So while vaccinations are available, the efficacy of those vaccinations does not, is, is not fully in effect for, for most people that are choosing to opt and have their good vaccine.
Right, I'm saying I go forward, so my point to that would be C point two and three that I made as far as. Hospitalization percentages are going down, ICU percentages are going down, there are, according to American Academy of Pediatrics, I missed this guy, there's one point four million kids. Little over one point four million kids in the state of Wisconsin, and less than two thousand have ever been hospitalized. And less than sixty, it's actually fifty-eight have ever ended up in the ICU. So again, I think in a, in a bigger picture standpoint, um, COVID in children, I. Based on the data, is different than, say, someone like my parents, my dad's in a nursing home, my mom, uh, sorry, mom is a diabetic and has other conditions. It impacts elderly differently.
Yeah, I would agree, yeah, thirdly, it impacts.
And, and, and I, I, I would also echo, uh. What you said, Phil, I, I think initially this week, I was like, you know what, um. Our plan, or, or at least I, as I approached the plan, was never meant to be rigid, it wasn't for me. I wanted to see data as it rolled in versus making a decision, not, uh, back in September or August or whatever, and, and, uh, not having real time data. And so I think initially I thought, and that makes sense, let's, let's do it, we have four days, um. But I guess the, the, the. Do we, do we know the number, so we know who's in virtual today based on test results? How, how many would we add? After that? Because we, we have a number that's out right now, correct?
Correct.
Elected because of, yesterday we had, uh. Um, yesterday we had a hundred fifty-five people out, say, ten of them were for appointment, vacation, something in that was planned, so. Um, and today it's a little higher, today we've got, that one fifty-five is primary only. Primary only, yep, intermediate is right around fifty, it's been consistently right around fifty there, so. So I, I don't know how many people would elect to, because again, it all depends on the family situation, is there an opportunity there? Some families even who have, who have the opportunity to get into virtual have decided, you know, it's, it's only for a few days. Because some of those families who have tested positive, um, again, it's up to them, if they want to come on back, we will get. We will get a significant number of them back because they'll be after the, are out of their ten day isolation period too, so. Uh, again, next week will be, our, our COVID numbers should fall once, you know, the ten days come, things like that. And just one piece too as well, just more of a local data, and sorry, I had a percentage report today at my Waukesha County Hall. Um. Cases reported to the county between, uh, zero and eleven have dropped twenty percent. From a week ago, so, that's at the local level. And they, and our, our numbers are involved in that, in that too as well.
Right, so we had been on the order of, kind of, or five or something.
We've been on five, yeah, right.
Uh, we have an animal.
This is correct. That's the number of people right now, as of this morning, we talk, that's a virtual, that's first of all, it's. Because a lot of people, some people have chosen, if they're COVID positive, they just have chosen not to get the medical test or access virtual.
I was looking, I was looking at your list from last night.
Yep.
There are probably people, even people who are out right now, who in abundance of caution. That wouldn't choose to do virtual, that would just continue to do asynchronous, right? If we're allowing that as an option.
On the flip side, it's just because they're going to school right now, doesn't mean that they, the option comes that they would.
Correct, and so I.
So we were looking at like about a hundred kids, what we're looking at.
We may, I, I mean, I, it, it's, it's hard and difficult to answer the question with a really good estimate, yes. Because I, we've heard from, you know, for instance, the families that spoke today were, would take that opportunity. To jump, I'm going to say the families, the ones who I, I, I read to, uh, but, uh, it's very difficult to be able to. And my recommendation truly comes with, uh, we feel that some connection to the classroom, going back to that educational access. We feel, number one, in person is great, at least come to school, we feel comfortable, two then is some classroom connection. That's the reason the virtual option for the students who were originally COVID positive or a family member. And then the third option is the asynchronous, so that's why just through an educational access opportunity, this.
When the several really are thinking, when we require people to do virtual, if they're not going to be in person?
I think it's very difficult to require virtual because at a lot of levels, you still require somebody sitting right next to them. Uh, but the other, it, it's, it's, it could be a, a custodial situation, because right now, we're finding, obviously, if you have a COVID positive poor payer. Um, you can't pass them off to a daycare provider, a relative, or anything else like that. Um, and sometimes families at eight fifty, the families may have a conference call that they have to do or whatever, it's, sometimes it just doesn't match up. Or excuse absences, this is doctor's medical.
One thing I wanted to add though, because I didn't want to, of staff, do you know that in the classrooms where there is not a staff member available, that option to virtual is not there, right? Is there a substitute in there? There's also, when you go to asynchronous or anything else, you have to gather the materials for a short time, it is the other staff. And that team that are doing that, and I'm very thankful, because through it all, you're trying to balance and be the best that we can be at this moment. But that is also just pull away from what staff are doing, I want you, I want you to make sure I say that. You know that the impact on students is one thing, and then, as I talked about around staff, the impact on staff there as well. Time to gather those materials, you might have more than one person on in your grade level, and then it's left to maybe one or two others to try and gather that with their class, do the virtual learning. But then also gather things that are going to be in the sense.
So.
That's one thing.
Regardless, so then, I mean, I mean, that also indicates regardless of whether you would allow virtual or. Or, or people that are not coming to do asynchronous learning, it's, you know, is it an equal stressor overall to staff? Like, right, it, it's extra work either way, for example, for our staff, they're jobs, right?
And they've been, they've been up to the challenge, so.
Well, sure, yeah, I mean, I, I.
So back to, back to, we'll use a wrong number, but we don't know, let's just say it's a hundred. We dropping a hundred new virtuals on our teachers. That's what.
Across the building.
Across the building, right? And by my count, we've got thirteen classes that don't have a virtual today, understanding that we do have staff. Primary teachers that are out too, and so that number is probably not thirteen, it could be ten.
I think there's a lot, so please, that number that you have came in at eight thirty, that I have to take. We have additional, at least fourteen, and I would say of that fourteen that are, are going to have to the country in our household. Majority, if not nearly all, would jump into virtual, so almost all of our teachers now will have a virtual option, I don't know if that helps.
That helps, then I guess the question is, is, are. For four days, is it, I think this is, is it a ton of work for four days if a hundred people jump in? Across the board in the building. From a, just from a tech side standpoint, um, to supply all those devices, again, I don't, I don't want to say we can't do it. Is there a lot of work that we need to do, because we have devices, but we need to take the charge of, we need to dismantle all of our charging cards. I'm asking from an employee's.
Is it a lot of work? Yes, is that where you're going to base your decision?
Well, it's a data point, I'd like.
It is a data point, is it a lot of work? Yes, the answer is yes, to do everything to pull that out together for virtual, yes. It's not just a simple pivot, so I will be very clear, at the, at the primary level, we don't have students that are set up in Google classroom, we didn't teach them that this year. We didn't, you know, give out those, those number, you know, the audience and all that, we haven't been practicing that as much. So there is, yes, it's a lot of work, that's, a lot of work. But work has never stopped us before.
All right, no, that's why I don't want to.
Nothing is easy.
Is anyone else open to the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I didn't say anything.
Oh, okay, I, I heard the phone flip, I thought you were, were trying to say something. I was just going to ask, is, is anyone else on the board open to, considering discussing the, you know, close as of, you know, after Friday ideas? Or we all just, no, we don't want to do that?
I know, a hundred percent this time. Unless, unless Ron tells me that we don't have staff. I would go with that answer, that's my recommendation, if we have to close because of a staffing, staffing issue where we can't staff our, our buildings, then that's another issue.
Okay, so that was one, I guess I, we need at least one more opinion.
I, I agree with that, uh, statement of Amanda, you know, not to close like we have a staffing issue.
I, um, so I can try and, I would say that. Um so I can chime in, I would say that the thing that we have been very consistent about is that. And school learning is the best opportunity, and I wouldn't wanna take that away from any families that. So, unless for staff.
I agree as well, if I were to be personally, I would be thrilled if my school was done today, like that's my. Just personally for my family, that would be the best fit for us, but then charged. As representing community and as a board member and having to do that job, I don't think that's in. The best interest. Of everybody, do I understand the sacrifice and the position that staff is in right now, the level of stress they're under, absolutely. Um. And so there's been a lot to weigh in this decision.
Echo other things, so there there's not a decision that we're gonna make today, that we need, everybody have. You know, to to the point, it's not an easy decision for teachers, for support staff, uh parents, students. There's not a.
I.
Okay.
I'm comfortable supporting Ron's recommendation. So do you wanna discuss the specific recommendations?
Um I was just gonna see what Health Bill was doing in my second part, like, as we were talking about, you know, we all agree to. Best, this is the best, so for me and talking about the stress on the teachers and everything, is it. I guess, do we have the support of that, but we'll find out with the motion, so.
I guess probably right now we need a motion, if there's a motion, then especially after that, if there's a motion, then second. I think so, can I just say one last comment, um as I think about this and comments that was made earlier about. Um changing versus not changing, um. I I think uh for me personally, uh. I am open to uh opening this up until. I think the uh factor that uh. Would play into it more today than say January. It's been a holiday. And spending time with family, uh it's celebrating, folks that celebrate Christmas, that's an important holiday, people's faith and life, and uh. I I think that weighs in my decision, and I I don't wanna mislead, uh and I wanna be upfront that I probably uh. Will be less inclined, uh if we're at the same situation, same numbers in January, I'd probably less inclined. To support, I think, uh. It's a, it's a big holiday for some people in their faith, and I recognize that, and uh. Ten days before, there's the window for people to be able to waste that time. But it's.
I I one hundred percent agree that it's important not to, but I do wanna say there is a way for people to get education, so you can take your kit out. And you can get it back at home, so I don't want anybody to go home and think that there is not an option.
I'll try chime in here, it's uh. It's wonderful the parents, some of the parents have that choice, to be able to be there for their kids. Help them with their education and, you know, be able to pull the kids out and stay home. But I, my concern is to the parents that can't. Be there and and we take away the option of um. Being in school is is not an option that I I wanna go to, um. I could live with the same same protocol that we're in, knowing that. Parents have the choice of getting the materials and working with their children because they have. That flexibility and fluidity in their lives, but not everybody has that, and so. I, you know, I'm willing to go with Ron's recommendation, but I could, I could easily stay and just stay with the. Same protocol we have, and uh let the parents make the choice for their children.
So what is our stance on? People who are taking their kids out because they don't feel it's safe at school, right, so right now we have this event. Whatever the numbers are, and we're saying, okay, we're gonna allow that and you're gonna be, you're not gonna be marked party. Or maybe you're not, we're excusing, it's an exclusive, right, excuse, so and and that matters, right, how that gets classified. Because after so many unexcused or children or whatever, then there's legal implications and all that stuff. So. If, like, what are the limits of that option for people, I guess, if maybe where I'm getting to? You know, right now we have, you know, fifty cases in a week at primary, frankly speaking. You know, if we have thirty in a week or twenty in a week, are we still okay with that, and we're gonna allow that? Because going into January especially. That, you know, if we're not gonna continue the virtual option, which I I I think is kind of the general consensus, then. You know, obviously, the only option those gives is having the the asynchronous learning, which. Is probably sub far from what we, what our expectation would be. Does that thought process make sense?
Yes. Um and we all agreed from the beginning that virtual was not the best option, and I think this is a response to a current situation. Of doing the best with not an ideal situation. But not. Comfortable trying to do the future.
I'm not comfortable studying us up for the future, if you're only thinking about it for Christmas, I'm not comfortable with having to bring great cups if people wanna get on a plane. And we have the same thing, and people wanting to do ten days out, I don't feel comfortable setting a line like this that. Is saying that it's okay, we one hundred percent give our parents choices, and that's what I believe in. And I also don't think that it's right to put this extra stress on our teachers, so I don't support. Yeah, I would support the one and the three, but not the number two, especially after hearing their teachers home. And I know there was a war primer, but uh I actually took the time to study to go visit some of the. People, and I. I just, I personally think that it's a decision when we eat, that people have an option, they have an option to do it. And that you're gonna take away from other things for it, so I. Um sure, I'll make a motion, um my first motion, uh I'll make a motion to. I guess, stay the way that we are and support our policies the way they are. I don't know if that's the correct way to say it.
Or or there's no motion made, because there there are policies in there, so I.
Cause their policy is one and three, right?
Let's not go along that road, let's make a decision, because remember, we 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 did the stock over on something. Oh, okay, while we understand that that's actually taking action.
Done, just to be clear, understood.
Teachers don't understand that, so I.
Understood.
I think if we're gonna do something, we should do it.
Is that nice, alright.
I make a motion to keep our current policy.
Access virtual.
Is that what you're saying, so that we have what we have, yes, that we have option number one, you come to school, and if you don't want to, you can take your. Homework home, and we have excuse absences for that, and if you have a, just state it out, so it's all there, if you have any exposure in the home. You can get to virtual learning that way, but we have to medical. I think that stated all of our current policies, so if you're not supporting Ron's recommendation, you're supporting, and I just, I know it's a disaster. I just. Oh, that's alright, that's alright.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my, I think I said this when we started our conversation, my. Report competition. I personally just don't see the four days of virtual learning. And I struggle with this because I wanna support people's decisions, people can say. But I don't see the educational benefit of that to a student outweighing the added. Grasp to teachers. I guess, maybe that. I guess the teachers, okay, so then this is a question, that that idea was initially when we had, you know. Twenty-five percent or or thirty percent or whatever it was of our primary teachers doing virtual. Now that we are in more of a situation for the next couple of days, at least of a majority, more than three quarters, let's say, of our teachers having at least one did virtual for our current policy. Is it substantially more work to have one, you know, two or three or ten virtual beds in your classroom? From a teacher's perspective than having one, and I understand it's a lot more work to get all the devices all back. But from a teacher's perspective, is there a. What is that?
They would have to, they'd have to gather materials, um send out Google, Google codes and 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 do some. Typically, that training happens with the parents on the other end, set them up and on the level of the age of people. So it's more work, it's more work, and I heard that, I say more time, more time, it's just more time.
Okay, so we need to just go and add it's.
It is, right.
Yeah, and again, if it's only for the four days.
So there's a motion in the second, I'll read it.
Aye.
Aye.
And?
All over.
No, I I heard, Dean said aye, I said aye.
I said aye.
Okay.
Aye. She heard, motion Chris. So. Dean, with all due respect, I just wanna make sure that you. Know that you agreed to keep the policy status quo and eliminate an option for the primary students to have virtual.
Correct, I.
So not Ron's recommendation.
Not Ron's recommendation.
Excellent.
I I'm in agreement. With uh Mekka's statement of is that any extra work, and I'm in agreement with Phil's statement for the four days. One person engaged, is it worth the extra work, um. And I, you know, it's wonderful that some parents have the right, I mean, have the privilege of not having to be at work and they can be there with their kids. And so they have those options, I wish, you know, I wish all parents had that option, but they don't, and so uh. We 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 just uh. We have to look at everybody's situation, we end up having to make hard decisions, so.
Can we, can we discuss for just a moment, the, so the the parents that are choosing to keep their kids home for the next couple of days? They don't have a virtual op, automated project, they don't have a virtual option right now, so they're gonna be doing, you know, older kids, if they are older kids, have to move to a classroom and that. Works, you know, that machinery works pretty well. For younger kids, you know, it's more packet based, something just gets sent home. What are the expectations going to be for? Teachers, the timeline of when teachers gather that information, have it available to families for pickup first, and when that, when that work is supposed to be completed. It would be my personal recognition that the requirement on staff be a little bit more convenient perhaps, that maybe by. You know, Monday or by, you know, by Monday or even, you know, by sometime next week. That staff would need to have all that information pulled together so that they were able to take it home, and that it would need to be completed by, you know, when the students were current in check.
But right now, we have a twenty-four hour turnaround, and parents have been so very kind and consider about, like, yep, they get it. Um to allow for our staff to pull, so usually it's about a day for them to have, be somewhere in that day that prep off time. They're then spending, you know, to make those copies and get everything pulled and.
Yeah, I guess that would add some for maybe being a little bit more convenient than 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 that requirement, but that's kind of what I would say.
I'm not seeing that that is a need, with our staff actually probably get it done within a couple minutes, they're like, they're really efficient right now. And also, the more we push off that access to education and learning for the families that are going on home with the package. Whether it's due to many different reasons, um I would just caution us not to put it out, because then why send anything at home if the turnaround next week is. On Wednesday, we're done, if that makes sense, so.
We really wanna expedite that process.
It's only three days, two days, so.
Right, and our and our staff so far has been. And if if there's ever a a concern or whatever, people are helping, or that teacher just says, hey, I'm really sorry. And so far it's happened.
Is there, is there any automated process for. For my kids are are home right now, and I haven't been like notified that, oh, you know. Oh, I didn't mean to school, we specifically asked individual teachers because there was something new about, and I know my. My primary student teachers, they're out, at least three, but I don't know if you've been there. Um is there like the automated thing, or is that up to parents to then specifically request in addition to notifying the school that their child's at home?
We have typically let that up to parents, in my in my communication, is now the families will be wanting to know what was the response from today. We will say, hey, if you do want that asynchronous work, like always, again, whether it's a normal illness. Or anything that would be planned for an appointment, please contact your 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 child's teacher.
When Melissa or myself or Bill gets that information, I will tell you, if it's an email, I respond, and I say, please let us know if you want to, what you need to. Give a lot of information that way, and then also, and then I also link the classroom teachers on that email. So they're already, and I say, the classroom teacher, let's just say, because he's a wood, will be in contact, you all are to sort of, that's kind of how it works. Same with um with Miss Mrs. Smith as well. That that's helpful, with the teacher being gone, families have still reached out, or the the teacher that's out, well, that's, you say, this family needs this pull, can you help? Yep, come on, that's what you said.
And Dawn and I are tied in on all those communications as well, so anything from our end that, whether it be special ads or just regular ad students. That they need, we are all tied into that, and everything is set with all their normal materials for the parents to pick up.
Need a motion in the adjournment?
I want a motion to adjourn.
Second.